Well, it is 5:00 PM, so welcome to the City of Iowa City Work Session for September 15th, 2020, and happy to see all of our councilors here. And I see our city manager and our city attorney is present. I wanted to see if we had, Anna is here from the university, so welcome. So we are going to get started with our meeting tonight. So again, welcome to everybody. We're going to start with affordable housing, and that was a part of our information packet. And so I think Jeff, I'll turn it over to you to get us started.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, you set forth in your strategic plan an effort to update our affordable housing plan here in Iowa City, and we wanted to get that conversation kicked off with you tonight, and we felt it would be best to look back at the past year and see some of the programs that we've had in place and what results that they've produced for us here. So I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Heichu, who's going to share a presentation with you that essentially walks you through the written materials you have in your information packet.
Hello, thank you. We're excited to present the Affordable Housing Accomplishments for Fiscal Year 20. I'm going to try and share my screen so you can look at what I'm looking at. Is everybody looking at Affordable Housing Report?
No.
Go ahead and repeat, everybody. You're not seeing it?
No.
Not on the screen.
Do I not have the ability to share my screen? Can you see it now?
Yes, it's coming up now.
Yep.
All right, good. That'd been a long presentation if you had just sit there and listen to me. Okay, so I wanted to start by just a general definition of what is affordable housing before we get to the conversation about the specific program. Just a reminder that affordable housing means that someone pays basically about 30% of their income on housing and utility costs. So for most of our programs, whether they be owner occupied or rental, we further limit the income that those folks can have in order to take advantage of our programs. So for most homebuyer owner occupied programs, you have to be under 80% of median income. For rentals, you have to be below 60%. That being said, the far majority of our clientele or the people that we serve are below 50% of median income. With these income limits, and I broke it down to what the hourly rate is, you'll find that our cashiers, cooks, janitors, bakers, sales clerks, childcare workers, home health aides, all these folks make about this amount of money, and our economy needs them, and they need affordable housing. We further look at rent also, about what we cap rent at, what HUD allows us to charge for rent in our affordable housing and a lot of our affordable housing. No matter what program you have, it usually ties back either to the income of the beneficiary or the HUD rent limit. So the maximum rents for home and CDBG is what you see below in that table. With home and CDBG, it further gets reduced by the utility allowance for tenant paid utilities. So for example, if you live in a one-bedroom unit and you pay 774, if that utility allowance is $92, then rent can't exceed $682. Now, these are the maximum rents. Some programs limit rent even further, but in general, when we refer to home rents or CDBG fair market rents, these other rents, they don't tie back to the income. What HUD does is they look at the American Community Survey, and basically they decided for our market, these are the rents that are modest and that they represent in our community. So it gets confusing because they don't necessarily tie back to those income limits. This report is a departure from how we normally report. Usually when we're doing CDBG and Home Report to you at the end of our fiscal year, and that is in the CAPER Report, our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, that reports CDBG Home, our Housing Authority accomplishments. And then we also typically report other programs when they end or at the end of the calendar year. This report looks at everything and tries to give you a comprehensive review of everything that we've done in fiscal year 20 out of Neighborhood and Development Services that evolves around housing. And when you look at everything we do, I came up with, well, two of our CDBG and Home goals, but these four goals represent about what all those programs do. And in that Excel spreadsheet that I gave you, you can put every program that we have into one of these goals. And some of these programs are more than one of these goals, but it's only reported once, so it's only in one location. So just a summary data, we made 12.4 million in funds available in fiscal year 20. We spent about 12 million of it to assist 1,780. What programs that consist of, we're going to go with Affordable Housing Fund, we're going to go over the Housing Rehabilitation Program such as the South District University Program, we're going to go over our competitive allocations, the Housing Authority accomplishment data, and then all those legislative programs that we've done either or negotiated through tax or government financing, our riverfront crossings. And we're reporting that because I don't think we've ever reported that in a holistic fashion to you, and we're going to show you how many units are in compliance during fiscal year 20. So I'll start with Affordable Housing Fund. We allocate, well, basically council allocates a million dollars. They did in fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 19. Then back in July, we switched how we allocated funds. So instead of a land baking and different things, we modified the allocation, the distribution formula, to what you see in front of you. So 70% goes to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. Out of that 70%, they have to reserve 20% for low-income housing tax credits. I'll probably refer to them as Lytec, but that's what that is. We created an opportunity fund just for flexibility to take advantage of opportunities that come within that year. We're continuing with the Healthy Homes Program. And what I really am proud of is the 10% that we reserve to help low-income households secure housing. It was a huge gap in our community, a security deposit program of our size. So that's great. And then we reserve 5% for emergent situations that we don't anticipate. The reason why we're going through Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County, why we allocate basically 70% of our funds to them, to me, it's a lot about their board. They have persons highly experienced in housing finance. They review complex projects. But out of all these reasons listed, the one that appeals to me most is that they offer funds on a quarterly basis, including one Lytec round that precedes the annual application cycle. If this was done administratively, I don't have the staff capacity to have multiple funding rounds a year. So this is great that when they have funds available, they're getting that out to the community, they're taking applications. They're a lot more flexible than federal and state programs, as well as financial institutions with their interest rate and what they approve for funding. So those are some of the reasons why we select Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County to partner with us. Out of their fiscal year 20 allocation of 500,000, they spent 182. They commit the balance of their funds to the next senior apartments of the Lytec project. Unfortunately, no Lytec applications were received by IFA, or they didn't approve any this year. So the Housing Trust went back and they quickly reallocated those money to the Cross Park Place 2.0 project, much like the, if you're familiar, many of you are familiar with Cross Park Place, but Shelter House got another award for 2.7 million through the National Housing Trust Fund. They'll start this spring. They estimate total project cost is 6.3 million. So that's where the balance of those funds will get placed into that project. As next senior did not get funded, those funds, at least 190,000 of them, get carried forward to the fiscal year 21 in Lytec round. So it sits there, and then when IFA has their next funding round, there will be another Iowa City application, and we'll see, hopefully that will get funded. We'll also report accomplishments, but you know, when a project is finished and we can report beneficiaries, that is when we report project accomplishment. So for those Lytec funds or the projects completed by, that the city assisted through Housing Trust Fund, we completed the Delray Ridge and Next Apartments this fiscal year. You can see the allocation that means over 60, I think that's 61 units for affordable housing. Each of those two apartment complexes also have four market rate units. So that are the accomplishments. It gets reported this fiscal year. Lytec projects can bring a lot of new construction, but we don't also, we don't always get an application every year. So having two in one year is great. The next one I've been talking about was the 10% allocated annually to help people secure housing. So we established 70,000 for the security deposit program. We entered a contract with Community Crisis Services in February. At the end of fiscal year 20, they'd spent 27,000 and assisted 31 households. When I called them recently, that number has went up to, they've spent 61,888 out of their 70,000. So we'll be entering the fiscal year 21 allocation with them this month. So they'll have another 70,000 to work with. The 30,000 that we reserved for the landlord risk mitigation funds was not able to proceed. We hope to work with the Johnson County Local Homes Coordinating Board in fiscal year 21 to set that up. So the funds that ended in fiscal year 20 that weren't spent in that fund go into our opportunity fund. So we don't lose those funds, they just get moved to the opportunity fund. And we'll talk about the balances at the end of the presentation. Emergent funds, we spent the remainder of what we allocated out to the Hawkeye Trailer Park relocation. We spent a total of 17,000, approximately to assist eight households. We spent 2,135 in fiscal year 20, but we report the eight households that benefited in this fiscal year because it's done in this fiscal year. And like I said, anything that balanced at the end of the year goes into the opportunity fund. So once again, it's available for reallocation. Out of the opportunity fund, the balances that we had, we acquired our first vacant lot for six townhomes in the Linnan subdivision. Hopefully, we'll be able to add this to a future Lytec project for family assisted housing. But we have that land, it's available, all the utilities are there, so it's ready for development. In our opportunity funding this year, the 75,000, that money got allocated out to houses and to homes. It paid for the Center for Worker Justice, the COVID relief payments, and fiscal year 20, and then a sum of 21 funds went to the Shelter House for the Addiction for Closure Prevention Program. And I wanted to mention this before I get into our COVID relief efforts, because we do encourage Iowa City residents to apply and determine eligibility for IFA's program before obtaining assistance. The state has allocated this $20 million. We want residents to tap into that $20 million before they come and they use our local fund. So we encourage people to start here, and if they're not eligible or they're denied assistance, then they apply to Community First Services. So we have two, I'm going to get to the community program last out of the three, but that 50,000 to the Shelter House Addiction for Closure Prevention Program, it's for your basics, emergency rent, mortgage, reutility assistance for three months. They can self-certify their income if they're impacted financially by COVID. We made those barriers easier, they just have to self-certify. The first payment must be in arrears, but after that, subsequent payments are made on time if the applicant basically self-certifies they're in the same financial condition originally. The benefit of Shelter House with all their assistance is provided through the coordinated entry system for homeless services. And I'll explain that benefit when I get to the Community Crisis Service. And the payment has to be issued to the landlord, mortgage, or utility provider. For Center for Worker Justice, they allow emergency payments of $600 up to twice in a 12-month period for either rent, mortgage, utility, food, healthcare, childcare. This is the funding that, you know, if you're not eligible for anything else, it's intended for those folks that are not eligible for unemployment or stimulus benefits. They too can self-certify their income if they're impacted financially by COVID, and the payment is made to the vendor. If that's not possible, we're allowed on the applicant to submit receipts for eligible expenses. In that one of your most recent council meetings, you allow the city manager to increase allocation for these programs when needed. I was going to say, that for Shelter House, they were allocated 50,000, they've spent 36,600 to date, and then Center for Worker Justice has spent 16,500 of their 25,000. So those are going to be needing to be renewed shortly. Our largest program locally is the Community Crisis Service Contract that we have with our Community Development Block Grant Fund. This was a direct allocation from HUD in the first allocation wave of the CARES Act. We dedicated 246,000 to this program. We entered a contract with Community Crisis Services, I think in July, July 14th of 2020. They've spent $20,941 to date. That money will get quite a bit more as we go, because not only are they starting to assist new people, but all those old people that are, all the other people that they've assisted, they'll continue to get rented if they just self-certify. So you're going to see that number grow quite substantially as subsequent months go on. So this is a federal program. It has to be due to COVID, so you do have to document income, income, and if you're financially impacted by COVID. They're trying to be flexible in the documentation they provide, they're calling employers, they're accepting what they can. But due to the federal nature of the program, they do have to document it. So we do allow the first payment must be in arrears, and then just like Shelter House, subsequent payments are made on time if you self-certify, you're in the same financial condition. What's great with community and Shelter House is that they use the homeless coordinating system, or the coordinated entry, sorry, coordinated entry. So if community gets a referral, and they're not able to document what they need to, or they can't assist them, they can refer that household to Shelter House. It goes, anything that that tenant or that person has provided for documentation gets attached and.
All right, Mayor, you get the B-team now.
All right.
Tracy looks like she's disconnected, so hopefully she'll jump back in. She certainly knows this better than I do, but she's just wrapping up on the community crisis program. We do have the second allocation of the CARES Act on your agenda today that would provide additional funds for this program, should, again, should you approve that proposed allocation that staff has in front of you today. And like Tracy said, although there's only 20,000 spent to date, and we have 246, we expect this number to rise pretty quickly. And I'm just, I know council knows this, but we expect the housing impact from COVID to last a lot longer than perhaps the virus may itself. So keep in mind that we may have housing needs that extend pretty far into next year. All right, Tracy must still be connected because someone's flipping through these, flipping through these slides. So Tracy, if, can you, can you hear me okay, Tracy? Just one second, Mayor. Okay, Tracy is still controlling this screen. I don't know if, Kelly, if you can, Tracy, you can just flip through the next slides, Tracy, otherwise I can bring up the presentation that you sent me earlier today.
I have it too, Jeff, but I'd have to dump Tracy out.
The joys of Zoom.
All right, Tracy is feverishly trying to get back on. Kelly, why don't you stop the screen share? And if you could bring up the PowerPoint, that would be great. I wouldn't have to hunt for it. Okay. Going. All right, back up one. Okay, one more forward, and then we'll start with our Housing Rehabilitation Programs. Okay, thank you, Kelly. And if you notice, Tracy hop back on, by all means, tell me to be quiet and invite her on. So in addition to the programs that Tracy's outlined before, we have our Housing Rehabilitation Programs for Fiscal Year 20. You see that we spent just under $700,000 to assist 32 homes throughout Iowa City. The more profile, high-profile programs that we have are the South District Program, which was new. That's the picture on the, on the top of the PowerPoint there. It's a duplex that we were able to buy and renovate and sell to two households that were already living in the neighborhood. We have one other one underway still yet. You can see that the monthly housing costs for each of those homeowners is approximately $510. So actually, when the project was over, the folks that moved into this duplex were actually paying less towards homeownership than they were renting in that same neighborhood. So a good success story there. And council knows that we are exploring some partnerships with Habitat and the Affordable Homes Coalition to take this program even further. We also continue with our University City Home Program. We do have one unit for sale on North Dodge that you see there, and we have one other program that is under renovation on Douglas Court, where we've done a number of these renovations. The lesser-known program is actually the first bullet point there, which is our GRIP program. And that's where the majority of funds had spent, just over half a million dollars, were spent rehabilitating 30 homes. And this is a real critical strategy for us in order to preserve our affordable housing stock. So this is making investment in the existing stock and making sure that folks can stay in their homes longer and that those homes remain affordable going forward. All right, jump ahead, please, Kelly. I saw a new panelist join. Is that Tracy by chance? Okay.
Yes, it was. Can you hear me?
Oh, perfect. Yes, Tracy. So can you see the screen's okay?
No, now that I can hear you, but now my screen won't show. So I'm blind looking at this because it says, I can only view Kelly's screen, and I can't, I can't share my screen, so I can't see it.
Okay, well, Tracy, if you have, if you have your presentation up in front of you on your computer, we're on the CDVG Home Competitive Allocation Slide.
I can stop sharing, Tracy, and let you back in.
I'm afraid I'll miss it. So I will just, let me. Wait, which slide are you on?
It's not, slide 16. It's the CDVG Home Competitive Allocation Slide.
Go ahead and keep talking, and I'll find it. And then I'll just jump in.
Okay, the high-level statistics are listed on the top there. Just over $700,000 spent in the last fiscal year, impacting 29 households. The Home Tenant-Based Rent Assistance Program is administered by our Housing Authority, and that's where the 29 households were assisted over four years. At the end of the program, all tenant-based rental units get converted over to our Regular Housing Choice voucher program. And Tracy will talk a little bit more about the Housing Authority going forward here.
So we're at the Housing Authority slide, right?
Nope, we're on the Successful Living bullet point of your CDVG program.
Okay, yep. Do you want me to go from here?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you. So our CDVG Home Funds, like I said, we report accomplishments in the year that they're completed. So we spent more than, well, we spent that 731,957. That includes prior years. That's what got spent in fiscal year 20, and those 57 beneficiaries are what projects got completed. So the bullets that you see here are all projects that were completed in fiscal year 20. So Jeff talked about the Tenant-Based Rent Assistance. We completed projects by Successful Living, the Housing Fellowship, serving persons with disabilities, and for people under 60% of median income. Successful Living and Mayor's Youth completed their projects of acquiring three properties, provide housing for 11 persons with disabilities. Shelter House acquired another home for permanent supportive housing, and Habitat acquired land and constructed and sold three homes. Kelly, can you go ahead and move it? So are you on the Housing Authority? Yep. So I always want to remind people that the Iowa City Housing Authority, it's not just Iowa City. Our jurisdiction includes three counties, Johnson, Iowa, and Washington Counties. For Washington County, it's that fourth north, that part of the county that's north of Highway 92. HUD also, we have to report to HUD on a calendar year, not a fiscal year. So when we report in our CAPER for year-end data, we're looking at CDVG and Home Programs that completed in fiscal year 20 and then calendar year 19 for the Housing Authority. So we're consistently reporting that year to year. So when you look at calendar year 2019 for the Housing Authority, we had over 1,200 Housing Choice vouchers. We had 83 VAS vouchers that are for veterans, and those vouchers assisted over 1,300 households. We own and manage 81 public housing units and 10 affordable housing units. In fiscal year 21, you're going to see that we acquired five more additional public housing units in the Chauncey and six in Augusta Place. But since those aren't purchased until fiscal year 21, you'll see that in next year's report. What was great for us is that we awarded 78 new mainstream vouchers for persons or households who are chronically homeless with a disabling condition. We started leasing those in March of 2020. So once again, that gets reported in the calendar year 20, so it'll be in next year's report regarding beneficiaries. And then I always like to remind people with the Housing Authority, since there's so much misinformation about the Housing Authority and voucher holders, that 57% of our households are elderly or disabled. Out of those, out of the rest, like the 49% were working families, that less than 1% of assisted households report family investment program, basically welfare is their sole source of income. Now, a head of household can earn income and have a disabled spouse, and that household would be counted both as a working household and a disabled. So sometimes our numbers don't actually add up to 100%. That's some of the reason why. The last part of accomplishment data is our tax increment. Oh, Kelly, you can move to the tax increment financing. So due to either negotiations with our tax increment financing, our riverfront crossings requirement, or any type of local requirement, we have 99 units under compliance in fiscal year 20. So for tax increment financing, 25 units are under compliance, one underway. Tax increment financing is a negotiated deal. So in early, when you're starting to TIP, we did approve 12 units. They're set at 120% of home fair market rent. One of the next projects were 12 units, and we're up with based on 40% of median income where the developer claims utility. The remaining two are set at the home fair market rent. There's a local requirement, remember, for the rise at 435 Lynch Street, due to them purchasing the units. For that point on, they had to provide 33 units for those under 80% rented at the home fair market rent. That was before TIP or riverfront crossings, but it was a local requirement. And then the riverfront crossings, affordable housing requirement that we set has contributed 41 units under compliance period. And then you don't always have, you either have to do onsite units or fee in lieu. So 756,244 has been received for payment in lieu. Now, these funds can only be used in the riverfront crossings district. As a background regarding the riverfront crossings, affordable housing requirement, before that was enacted, there was a committee of affordable housing advocates, lenders, developers, that worked for about a year and a half on a policy to develop and that set the fee in lieu, that set the affordable housing requirement. So in the riverfront crossings district, what makes us unique and what we can do, why we can have this requirement, is that developers choose to get this rezoning. And if they choose to rezone their property from CB10 or whatever their commercial zone in was in the riverfront crossing district, in exchange to get increased density and height, they have to provide affordable housing. So somebody technically could develop a riverfront crossings under the old zoning, and they don't need to provide affordable housing. However, once they decide to get that rezoning, then that requirement kicks in. Kelly, you can go to the next one. So I put, so this is a pie chart of funds spent by category, and I think it's interesting to see. So when you include the Housing Authority and all of our sources, you see more than 90, I think about 95% went for rental housing and 5% went with owner occupied. So you can see rent subsidies, the Housing Authority took up the lion's share of our pie chart along with rental new construction. That had mostly to do with our two Lytec projects that became online in fiscal year 20. Kelly, can you go to the next one? So when you go to the next pie chart, it changes quite a bit because you have those rent subsidies taken out from the Housing Authority. You still see rental new construction and rental acquisition. Basically, you have about a 75-25 split, so 75% for rental housing, about 25% for owner occupied housing. So this is where we're spending our funds locally and what the categories we're spending our funding on. Can you go to the next one, Kelly? So funds that are carried over next year. So our opportunity has 595,000. That'll be converted to next year. We are looking at a property to acquire. It won't take the full 595,000, but we are actively working with landowners to purchase property. Our low-income housing tax credits, we will combine our fiscal year 20 remaining funds with our fiscal year 21. So we'll go into the next. So we'll go into the next fiscal year 21 Lytec funding round with 380,000. We've accumulated those 756,000 for fee and lieu in the riverfront crossings. And then our Housing Authority has 420,000 available for the development or acquisition of low income replacement housing units. So we have approximately 1.9 million available that we go into fiscal year 21 for more affordable housing opportunities. Kelly, you can go to the next one. So what you'll see our focus in fiscal year 21 being is we're going to continue our COVID housing relief efforts with Community, Crisis Service Shelter has a Center for Worker Justice. We're just notified that we're, well, later on this agenda, you're going to see how our second wave, the 390,000 that we just got allocated through the state will join the funds that we already have available for our programs with Community. But we also just were notified of a third round that we'll receive directly from HUD again for, I believe, 424,000. We'll have to discuss how those funds are, are going to be administered. At some point, both the city and our funding partners, we have to look at staff capacity. Quite a bit of funds, so why we might have difficulty administering all these funds. Also, our local nonprofits are receiving federal state funds as well, along with increased needs. So capacity may become an issue. To recognize that HUD is allowed us to spend the fund up to three years to get a much long range view of the problem and where we need to put our resources. So the fiscal year 21, or that second, that round two and three will allow us to increase time to spend it and to see where, where the needs develop. We'll talk about that second round later. It's an agenda on your, on your council agenda. The second focus will be regulatory changes, which is extremely important. Like I said, we subsidize about 10% of the rental market. That means 90% of the rental market is private market. And so what we can do to encourage the private sector to increase density and diversity of housing in every neighborhood will help us with our affordable housing goals. So three items that we're working on is adopting and implementing the South District Form Based Code. These are codes that we will use, the concept that we use in future rezonings of outlined areas. We're going to review our policies. We've, we've taken input from the Home Builders Association, Affordable Homes Coalition. We're currently reviewing that input and seeing what changes can be made to our code. And we'll, within the next few months, we'll initiate a comprehensive plan amendment, which increases density and diversity in all our existing single family residential zones. So that's what our urban planning department will be working on extensively within fiscal year 21. And Kelly, you can go to the last slide. That's pretty much a summary, and I'm pretty sure Jeff probably did an excellent job of the slides that I missed. But if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Tracy, I'm wondering if you have a sense of how Iowa City compares to other communities when you kind of put everything together in this sort of overview?
Most entitlement cities, and I mean cities with more than 50,000, they do have access to, they might not, their housing authority might not be part of the city. That's probably unique for a lot of cities. Usually, housing authorities are standalone agencies with the county or with a multi-county jurisdiction. But from what I hear from other entitlement cities, the amount of funds that we spend outside our federal funds, whether they be vouchers or community development, community development, block grant or home funds is unique. I think, I think we spend and we allocate more funds than a lot of other Iowa entitlement cities.
Tracy, you, you said that there is more money is coming, which is great news that a lot of people will be like receiving help because we know the need is great on this community. Right now, we're being seen the needs. But you talk about, you brought like really a good point about staffing capacity. What else can we do to make the fund that the city have out there more accessible to the people? Is there any way the city can give more money to like nonprofit organization to hire in person? Somebody who can meet people in person, at least one person. I know that coronavirus and everything, all these challenges. But in the same time, like low income people tend to do better with in person. You know, like, I mean, our obligations or, you know, just like calling and just if they get a hold of somebody or leaving on a seat. And when they call back, the agency call back, most likely maybe those people either are working or they did not hear the phone, and they will miss that phone call. You know, and it will be just like back and forth. And this way, I don't think our money is really accessible. How can we just like really make it easy for those agency to make it accessible to the people? If can, we can allocate more money for them to hire in person? Or what do you think? I guess like ideas?
Yeah, we can encourage them. When we get the money, we, we definitely work with our community partners. Our community partners like Shelter House, Center for Worker Justice, all three of them. When we reward money, it's usually a one-time assistance or it's a grant. We, agencies have to determine if they can hire staff that might not go past that grant. And so each agency has to determine if they're going to add staff. And so we typically don't require them because the amount of admin we're paying with these contracts is only 10%, 10% or less of the contract. So it's up to the agency to decide if they're going to hire additional staff or if they're going to hire some part-time staff just for this grant. And then that person, that position is eliminated or that position ends at the, when they, when they stop the grant. So that's something we've always let the, the agency decide.
That's why I'm saying. I'm not, I know that 10%, and I know it's up to the agents and everything, but I'm saying now to the city. I'm asking the city, how can we make this accessible? With this challenge is that happening with the coronavirus and the grid to the community? Can the city allocate separate money to hire a temporary staff to meet people in person? I'm not talking about to the agency. I'm talking now to the city.
I think that's, if I could jump in, I think that's probably, you know, within your discretion at the, with, with your opportunity fund. Your opportunity fund was designed for, for that type of, that type of assistance. So if you felt like that was a need, we could approach our partner agencies and, and, and see if that would be of interest to them. Basically, what you're doing is you're increasing that admin fee with, with local funds. So instead of the 10% federal, they might get 10% federal and another 10 or 15% local on top of that. But yeah, that's, that's probably, you know, that, that opportunity fund was, was meant for, you know, anything that may come up throughout the year that's unplanned.
I, I think we need to think about that councils because, you know, I, she just gave us the update of the numbers. We still have money out there, 20% out of two, something hundred. And the challenge is, is there? And there is great needs in the community. And I guess we have this money out there so we can spend them, you know? We, we don't want to save them. We need people to use it. And, you know, it is, we, we need to figure out how can we help the nonprofit organizations? So they can, also, they have another work. Those number of organizations, it's not designed only to do this. They have a lot of work to do in the community beside that. So let us think about a way to like make this accessible to a lot of people.
Hey, Tracy, I have a question related to, are, is your department getting a lot of calls directly about housing needs? Whether it's affordable housing or rental assistance, is your department directly getting calls?
I, I know community development is not because when we advertise some of the programs, the advertising directs them directly to community crisis services. I can check with the Housing Authority. You can usually, people start with the Housing Authority for assistance. But I think all the advertisements that we sent out either puts you directly in contact with Shelter House, Center for Worker Justice or crisis or community. So we've not been getting a lot of calls at NDS, but I can check with the Housing Authority.
With the Housing Authority, I know there, we had some increased vouchers, which was great. But of course, it's for multiple counties beyond just Johnson County. I'm assuming that all of those vouchers have been called for. Or do you know that information?
My, the housing. Have a one-year, two-year, like almost two-year waiting list.
Yep.
Period. You know, if you apply today, you will get it after two years, I guess.
Yeah.
There is a lot of needs and a lot of people waiting on the waiting list.
So one of the, one of the things that I was trying to drive at is, one, is that need? And, and that is showing the need with the waiting list. If we were to do some type of a large scale project with affordable housing, are, are there any ideas, and maybe not now, you don't have to share, but would be interested to hear any ideas that you've heard done in other cities? We know that it'd be cheaper if we use existing stock. Or whether it's cheaper or not, I think it's more climate friendly if we're using existing stock. But I guess the council has, you know, stated that we want a plan, affordable housing plan, and want to be aggressive. And so want to, if there's any ideas for council, we, I certainly would entertain it. And it doesn't have to be done today. I think the purpose of today was to just give us like information about where we are. And I, I want to commend you and your staff for all of the programs that you presented today. So we're doing some great things, and I think we should be proud of that. And we should not run away from acknowledging we have a lot more to do. So, yeah, I, I, I think.
That's true.
Yeah, I, I think if we can, for me personally, just marinate on the information for today. And then I hope to be dreaming tomorrow about other opportunities that we can have within our community.
I guess.
Go ahead, Maas.
No, go ahead, Pauline.
Oh, I, I just wanted also to echo that and just thank Tracy and her staff for compiling this report. You, you, you and your department have obviously been very busy. And recently, there have been public comments inferring that we haven't put much effort into helping with housing for the low to moderate income members of our community. In the past few years, I believe that we have taken some major steps towards addressing housing insecurity by developing plans and authorizing funds, a lot of funds. This report documents those efforts. But just side note, I was especially pleased to see the report regarding the South District duplex project. I have supported plans for this project since I first heard about it. And I was so impressed with the figure quoted for the monthly cost to the homes for mortgage, tax and insurance. As Jeff said, it's a very, very successful story because that'll certainly be helpful economically for those individuals that are able to buy those duplexes. And, and I hope that we will have the opportunity to continue with that project so that other individuals can also realize the dream of homeownership. I think it's a great project.
Okay, Jeff, I just want to conclude what I proposed. I see nobody talk about it, but I'm going to ask, is that means we are inviting the nonprofit organization to apply for, if they need, if they need a position to apply for that grant? To apply to the, what is called the opportunity?
Well, I think what would happen if there's a majority of council that wants us to do that, we would just contact the three providers that we're working with and ask what type of assistance that they would need in order to expand the availability of, of their staff. So I don't, I don't think it would be necessarily in an application period. It would just be more direct outreach from our, from, from City Hall here to those three providers to say what would be helpful. And then we would gobble together a proposal based on the, the needs of those individual agencies.
Okay, so I really propose this to our, my fellow council members, and this is, there is a great need. So I've been firsthand experience, I've been seeing this. I know the limited capacity of the nonprofit organization. And I know that, you know, this is going to be temporary, it's not like something, hopefully, hopefully, it's a temporary situation and it will go away. I really propose that if we can help, you know, or give direction to the city many years. And Tracy, to reach out to those community and ask them those questions if they need help.
I, I agree that we really need to build capacity. And sort of I apologize also for my picture being off and in. I had to just move into City Hall from my home because we lost our internet, speaking of, speaking of challenges with Zoom. But I, it seems to me that the best way to ramp it up right now, whether it's someone within the city or using the opportunity funds to offer extra funds to our partners would be to increase the capacity by allowing at least one extra staff, if not more, to be hired.
I, I think that those three agencies that we were talking about, I don't see them as being shy for asking for assistance and, and knowing what kinds of assistance they need. And I think they would be honest and upfront about it, and I would be okay with that.
I think during this time, we've seen maybe, well, we have seen a lot of challenges and more work on all agencies, even if they're, some of their programming is down. I think the workload has been increased in other ways, what's been stressful for people. So I would be totally willing to, to ask staff to just inquire what the needs might be and get back to council about it.
I'm fine with that. I think we need, I think we need to look at it obviously as, as one position. And clearly that it's set up as a temporary position. And somebody who's familiar with all the agencies and then figure out, you know, who, if they're reporting to the city or, you know, community or whoever. But if they are having trouble actually, you know, allocating the dollars and getting the money out, then I don't have a problem with doing a temporary funding so that they can have some extra capacity in their staffing.
Yeah, that seems like.
You're talking about the agencies themselves hiring somebody, correct?
That would be my thought, yes. And so it's clearly a temporary position simply to help with the allocation of these funds for COVID.
We'll do that. We'll just, we'll reach out to the three agencies and, and, and kind of do a needs assessment with them when it comes to administering these programs. And then we'll, we'll, we'll report back to you on what, what we find and, and hopefully with the recommendation.
If I could go back, Tracy, I've got a question. And one, I just, a couple, I guess a couple of comments. Pauline, thank you for your comments about, you know, we have been spending a lot of money and a lot of people in the community have no clue how much we really have been doing. I mean, we've completed basically a 15-point affordable housing plan that I don't remember how many years ago we put that in place. But we've accomplished an awful lot with getting that done. And certainly it's, you know, time to, to develop a new one as we move forward and build upon what we've already done. And as Pauline said, we, we've spent a lot of money. And kudos to staff for helping us figure out how to leverage the money that we have with Lytec projects and, and IFA funding, et cetera. I mean, for us to have put in roughly a million and have do, sent out about 12, over 12 million this past year is, is pretty phenomenal. So I really appreciate that. And to you, Tracy, and your staff, yeah, kudos on this report. In the 10 and a half years I've been on council, this is by far the most kind of comprehensive, all in one place, you know, table, so you can really see what's, what we've done and what kind of funding streams they fall under, et cetera. So it's, it's incredibly good. My one question is, as we look at Shelter House's new project, kind of Cross Park Place number two, we have done project-based vouchers in the first Cross Park Place. And I assume that we're going to be wanting to do that same thing in the second one. Do we have enough project-based vouchers? And if, and if not, how is that going to impact the vouchers we have? Or can we get additional project-based vouchers?
Back in 2018, when we approved the project-based vouchers, it wasn't, we just didn't approve project-based vouchers for Cross. for Cross Park Place. We set aside 5% of the vouchers in our program to be used as project-based for these types of projects. Basically, people are chronically homeless with a disabling condition. So yes, we have enough vouchers for the new Cross Park Place. I think there are going to be 36 units. So we, council doesn't need to do anything. We will, I believe we just allocate those with, we send, I talked to Steve, but I'm pretty sure we just communicate directly with HUD. If anything, we might just have to get a resolution from you. But I think since we've already set that set aside, they'll be granted those vouchers. All those mainstream vouchers, you're gonna see all those mainstream vouchers, those 78 be utilized in Iowa City because they're for a very specific population. It's for people who are chronically homeless with a disabling condition and permanent supportive housing. Basically, it's shelter house properties in Iowa City. So you're gonna see, unless we create some new units outside of Iowa City, the majority, probably all of them being utilized in Iowa City.
My question about Lytech, Tracy, is the Lytech is certain years affordability?
Sorry, what was that?
Lytech programs.
Or the affordability period?
Yes.
It's essentially 30 years, technically for 15 years. And then those are situated where they re-up for another 15 years based on their application. So yes, most of my tech projects are 30-year compliance periods.
That, that said, oftentimes, they will be affordable for longer than that. You know, for example, with Delray, and that being owned in the future by the, by the Housing Fellowship, you know, their mission is to provide affordable housing. So presumably, they are going to hold that beyond the compliance period. Or if they decide to sell it, those proceeds would get reinvested into other affordable housing. So a, a lot of it depends on, on who you're partnering with on those programs. But the minimum is going to be that, that 30-year period.
Oh, that sounds good.
I think, I think what staff presented is really remarkable. And at the same time, I think that as, as we gather our, our forces and whoever decides to really work on affordable housing going forward of, of my colleagues, I think we should continue to think of, essentially to think big, to think that the need, the need continues to be great. There, there are large numbers of people who are spending way, way too much of their income on housing. That's not going to go away in addition to COVID and everything else. It's tremendous that we're getting the CARES Act funds and, and all these CDBG funds. But I, but, you know, we've been able to leverage funds. We have the new partnership with Habitat for Humanity. I just, let's, you know, we, some years ago, we started, the council and the city started at a much lower base. We're starting at a higher one now. And I just suggest that we set our sights as high as we can, even considering our fiscal constraints.
I really want to echo what, yeah, again, I said, but first, really, there is, many things has been done. Thank you to the staff. Thank you to everyone who really, like, you know, with those two guys that are now, we are, as Laura said in the beginning, she was asking what the housing city is doing comparing to other city. I think we're doing much better and we are in the head of the game. But as the mayor said, there is a lot of work need to be done. And back to Janice, we really need aggressive plan for, you know, affordable housing. Or that's Bruce said that, I guess. And Janice also said we need something really, you know. And I think we, we have, today, we're not going to say what we're gonna do because we don't have any experience to say, okay, well, the plan for affordable housing will be one and two and three. We don't, I don't have that experience. But I think as all of us agree that we need to have aggressive, strong plan for affordable housing to put in place, I think our next step will be just like inviting the people who really work in on affordable housing, whether it's like Housing Trust Fund or Affordable Housing Coalition, Housing Fellowship, or Habitat. Those are people who are really, you know, show a lot of progress in working on affordable housing. I think we just need to do that. And I, and I say that, I would like to be on the affordable housing committee.
You have an echo, undoubtedly.
I guess it's coming from Tracy somehow. But it is, yeah, that's what I was trying to say when we put those committee. I don't know, do you guys want to do it now or not? But you know, I, I have very interesting on being on the affordable housing committee that we need. I don't know if that committee will be the committee who was supposed to put the plan together with the staff? Or this is just like, we invite people to come up with a plan. I, I don't know how we can do it. But all of us now, I think, agree that we need to plan for affordable housing.
I don't know if Council Burgess wants to say anything. But I, but I did want to maybe just quickly echo, a part of the hope that I have for us today with the Black Lives Matter is to kind of, well, actually with this one right here, is to talk about that plan and how the initial process of bringing people together that will create that plan. Does staff want to, you know, kind of start the initiation? Do we bring in part, community partners, which I think would be very valuable, to have some experts that deal with housing? They're the ones that are dealing, you know, hands day to day. Landlords definitely have some not-for-profits, like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as well as Shelter House. Many, many different businesses could contribute to this conversation. And just like we're doing these meetings in the parks, which hopefully will not be total fall weather, maybe there is an opportunity for maybe there to be some type of a brainstorming of imagining what housing opportunities could be. This could be people submitting some things that they've learned from other communities. So I would at least like to start that conversation and definitely include staff thoughts, entertain, and welcome your thoughts as well.
I mean, I think there's an enormous brain trust in our community with the, with the nonprofits and staff and others. There's, we have, we have the ability to put the heads, have everybody sit down at the table and come up with a plan. I think it's really important as we move forward that one, whoever's involved, looks at our previous plan that we're just finishing up. Because that 15-step plan was pretty comprehensive and accomplished an awful lot. And we need to make sure that what we're doing is building on that. And, you know, some of those may be things that we, you know, are continuing to do. So if the next one, while, you know, I agree that, you know, we want to be as bold as we can. When you, like Jana said, when you're already starting from higher level, you know, you, you've got to look at where you go from there. And I don't recall who was involved in developing that last one. I think it was primarily staff. But I would certainly, you know, agree that, you know, the Affordable Housing Coalition, Housing Fellowship, et cetera, would be, you know, good people to include in that. But I think it's really important that the people that sit down at that table to try and work on that are people that do have some expertise in housing. Otherwise, I think the idea is, let's throw money at it, let's throw money at it. But what we need to do is make sure that the money that we're putting in there is used as efficiently as possible so we get the biggest bang for our buck. So I think we just really need to make sure we've got a lot of experts in housing at the table.
I agree with Susan. I think it's, it's very important that we, we build on what, what we've done in the past and, and not totally reinvent the wheel as such. Because those, that 15-step plan we had accomplished a lot. So I think we do need to build on that. And we do need to utilize our resources from the community.
And I see our, our role as the policymakers, I get really excited about the regulatory changes that, that Tracy mentioned, those things that we still have in the works that are upcoming very soon. The South District Form-Based Code and talking about the, the other sort of regulatory changes that, that can be maybe hard to quantify exactly how they impact in terms of dollars the affordable housing landscape in our community. But we know that long-term providing alternatives for allowing for more affordable housing, for having density requirements changing. I mean, these things that we're talking about with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment and the Form-Based Code in particular, I think that's, you know, that's kind of our expertise here on council that I get really excited about. So I think we've got a great whole group of people, the community experts, the staff experts. And, and I see our role is really focusing on that policy part to bring it all together.
I'm curious to know, what are next steps for, what are people thinking are the next steps?
Mayor, I'll, I'll jump in. I mean, ultimately, this is a, this is a council-driven initiative. But I, I would be really interested in trying to work with Tracy and her team and, and sketch out a, a preliminary public input, a plan, and, and really get, get started with that. I think you all said it really well. Let's, let's find a way to, to talk with the providers in the community that know this issue better than anybody and, and get some of those ideas on the table. And then after that process is complete, I think there'll be a clearer picture forward on, on what we need to do as a city to, to put together a plan. So Tracy and I and her staff could, could sketch that out for you. And if you're comfortable with the process we lay out, we could get going yet this fall.
I, personally, I think that would be a great next step, just to connect with community providers and bring something back to council.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right, I'm seeing some not enough heads. So, all right, all right. Well, anything else for Tracy? Thanks for the presentation.
Thank you very much, Tracy.
I didn't debate that, or let Jeff, just let Jeff handle the rest of it.
Good call, Tracy. Good call.
You did a great job.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, all right. Well, thank you again. And we're going to continue with our agenda for today and COVID-19 updates. I did want to just make mention that on Friday, I extended the mask mandate. And that is in effect, it was to expire on the 15th today. So on Friday, that has been extended until November. And so, thanks to everybody out there that are wearing the mask. It is not just symbolic. It really is saving lives and decreasing the risk of another person contacting COVID. So thanks to everybody that has really participated in being an active player, very conscientious of remembering to take your mask out the house. I know sometimes you can jump out the car and start walking into a business and get halfway there and think, oh, my God, you know, I need a mask. So thanks for every, to everyone for adjusting.
I think we're also, we, we seem to be all about plans right now. I think we're gonna need to continue to have a plan going forward. The governor just, the governor's office just announced that they're gonna lift the, the restrictions on bars in four of the six counties. So not in Story County and not in Johnson County yet, but the other four counties starting tomorrow evening. And so, I mean, I, I don't know how long the governor's gonna keep the restrictions on here. And so we need to work very closely with, with the community, with the, with bar owners, with student organizations, with the university, with everyone to make sure we have a viable plan going forward.
The governor's plan for here does expire on the 20th, so that's only five days away. So I, I, I mean, I, I don't want to take a guess at what could happen. But our numbers apparently are very concerning to her as they are to us. And so we'll have to wait five days from now to see what happens, if she's gonna extend it or if she's gonna end it.
One thing, one thing I would mention on COVID, since it's, there's so much need for education among ourselves and everyone on it, even at this stage, I, I ran across an article by Ed Yong in The Atlantic. It's called "America is Trapped in a Pandemic Spiral." And I felt it captured the, you know, the complexities of the issues we're facing in terms of COVID. And, you know, trying to look forward into, you know, what needs to be done to address the situation we're in at the moment. But I found it to be as comprehensive as anything I've, I've come across in terms of trying to summarize the challenges, you know, we face moving forward. Mayor, can I offer two COVID-related topics real quick?
Yes, please.
One is the next round of CDBG funds that, that Tracy alluded to. We don't have all the communication we need to from HUD, but we do think we'll be receiving $424,000 more in CDBG funds. And I would like to begin to look at a CDBG business support program. We do some CDBG business support that you may be familiar with, with our regular annual entitlement funds. But with the first two allocations going to nonprofits and housing programs, and at least for the time being, feeling pretty good about the fund balances that we have there and the additional spending authority you gave me on the, on the local side, I think it would be good for us to look at a small business support program that, that targets income-qualified business owners in Iowa City. And it'll take a little bit of, a little bit of time for us to research some of those programs that are, other cities have, have deployed with their CDBG funds. But before we get started on that at a staff level, I'd like to see if there's council concurrence, at least if, and allowing staff to, to investigate and, and share with you what that program may look like. Doesn't mean that you have to follow through with it. We could clearly put more money into the, the housing programs that we have stood up for COVID. But I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear council's thoughts real briefly on, on whether we should be looking at a, a business support program.
I would like to see staff look into it. I think what we all need to remember is when those businesses fold, those are employees that now no longer have jobs and can no longer pay their rent or their mortgage. So while it's not direct rent or mortgage assistance, it really can be helping people continue to pay their rent and mortgage because they continue to have a job. So I would be interested at least in what that would look like.
Do you mean the business who cannot apply for the, for the money out there? Or yes, this is, which one?
Correct. So we would, just like we have to kind of think about all the rules and regulations for the, the housing programs, we'd have to think about that for the business program. So you may be a lower priority if you've already received the payroll protection loans from the federal government. But we know that a lot of those small businesses especially did not receive any federal assistance. So my guess would be that we would prioritize those, those small businesses. And, and as I mentioned before, because of the nature, the source of the fund, CDBG, there's probably going to be some type of income qualifications for the owners or employees of the, of the business that's receiving assistance.
Just federal funds that offer the compensation benefits. So we couldn't, they've gotten money for the PPE, the same type of expense.
Thanks, Tracy.
But Jeff, could that include such things as like, I know there are some hair salons that have been traumatized by the COVID. They, they are following the strict guidelines and only have one customer at a time, whereas maybe they have three chairs going with, with three customers in at one time. So would something like that, a business like that be considered, the small business you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think so. Again, we have to do a little bit of homework on our end to figure out what makes sense. But, you know, thankfully, there are cities that, that have already used COVID CDBG for these types of programs. So we can, we can borrow from them and see what works best here.
And also, is this going to be like for payroll? Or you, you, you did not have any idea yet? You just gathering information?
Yeah, we, I just want to make sure that, that the concept itself isn't, isn't going to be kind of dead on arrival, if you will. That if you felt really strongly that the, the housing programs need all the money that we can get, then, then we then then we would just continue down that path. But I like to invest some staff time in exploring the business side of things. And if at the end of the day, again, we decide that that's not the best use of the funds, it's okay. It's just a kind of more of an exploratory process for staff. Yeah. And just also, it may be implicit in the idea of small business, but I would add local, locally owned as well.
And it would be something like that. Oh, you, you said you don't have details, but I'm just saying that. Is this something that people kind of lie to the city or we housing somewhere else then?
Yeah, we'd have to think through that. It would probably be some competitive grant program. And whether we administer it or look for a partner to to administer it, I I don't know yet.
I think a lot of the hospitality industry, particularly restaurants and stuff, they're just are, I don't know how many of them are going to survive, and they do employ a lot of people. If we, if we can't give them a little bit of hand up, because if we really want them to continue to follow distancing guidelines and we need them to, they really can't make ends meet right now.
I appreciate that. We'll, we'll, we'll sketch something out and then review it with you at a future work session. The other topic that I just want to let you know that staff is starting to think about, and and you can direct us any way you want in the future, is we need to anticipate that day when when water shut offs will resume. And I don't say that as I anticipate that happening anytime soon. And I don't, I don't believe that would be your, your intention to resume that in 2020 even. But we need to plan for that day because we don't want to come to that day, you know, whether that's sometime in, you know, next spring, and have a, have a huge backlog of of people that are getting shut off notices. We want to try to bring those people and and get them, get them paid before that date hits. So similar to the past conversation, what I'd like to do is spend some, some staff time looking at a utility relief program. And it would be tied to a, it would be tied to a kind of a a payment plan of sorts. So we would notify those accounts that are passed due, and we have over eight hundred accounts that are passed due right now, and let them know that, you know, we'd like them to to come on a payment plan with us. And then we'd have to figure out how this all works, but based on their own financial situation, all or a part of that passed due amount could be forgiven with a loan to the city. Again, depending on on their, on their situation. So we would have to think about how to structure that program. But in my mind, I'm thinking that sometime this fall, we start to engage those eight hundred accounts with the, with the thought that we're going to resume shut offs sometime maybe early next spring. Again, you all have to make that that call, but that gives us four, five, six months to begin to work with them. And even if they're not paid off by that date, if they're active in that plan with us and showing good faith to try to catch up, then we're not going to have this situation where we're, we're issuing eight hundred or a thousand shut off notices, which, which would be a terrible idea. So just trying to get in front of that. Again, it's something that we would come back to you on to make sure you're comfortable with the approach that we're taking. But if you have, if you have thoughts on how we should do that, you know, in the next couple of work sessions under this topic, it'd be helpful to hear those.
But Jeff, I really believe that we don't have to do anything right now. I understand that you are not doing it now. But, you know, it's really sad to see that we have eight hundred people passed to you and still we have money out there. Is it, is any way the city can reach out to those people and refer them to where they can get help? There is many people helping on water right now and utility bills. So I I think they just, maybe those people, they don't know. Or, you know, I don't know how can, when you send a bill, is there is a way you can put a flyer there? Or you can put something on the envelope saying that you are late, please contact those people for help. So, you know, those people can apply for the money that we have it out there.
Yeah, it's a very, very good point. I think we would, we would roll that into whatever plan we produce. I just haven't, we haven't given it much thought, but but you're, you're right. Leaning on those existing programs would be critical and making sure that our customers are taking full advantage of those programs would be a top priority.
I, I want to, oh, sorry. I have one question so that I understand this. So what you're proposing is that essentially no one would essentially be cut off. I mean, that's, that's kind of the goal, that no one, no one's water would be cut off. There would be some type of a resolution to keep them going. What I do know is that, for whatever reason, myself, COVID has been a busy time or just this entire year. And I've, I've kind of had some bills. Normally, I pay my bills right on time, right? And so then sometimes the, it gets like on the shelf and then by the time I get to it, it's passed due, you know. And so I do know that there are some people out there that may be in that same boat, where if they got that shut off notice, they'll run and pay the bill, right? Or or they'll call. So I I think what my preference would be definitely right now, because COVID is going to be here for a while. And the implications from over reduced income and all types of of things are going to be here for a while. So what I would like to see personally is that, yes, if we do have that, you know, shut off notice, go out there or something like that, like your balance due, maybe it's just, no one goes. It's just on the, you know, when you see that pass due stamp on that bill, you know, shut off at risk or whatever the case may be, we'll get those calls into City Hall for those payments. So I I just wanted to, you know, kind of put my two cents in there, where if, if people get that notice that, you know, it's due, then some people, whether they're just kind of had it on the shelf and forgot to pay it. Now, you know, they see it, they're like running to to pay their bill. Those individuals will come forth and pay. And then for individuals that get the letter that Mayor Pro Tim just mentioned, you know, there are resources out there. If you can afford it, then those individuals have an opportunity to find resolution and not have the water off.
I I don't agree with you, Mayor. How many people like you did not pay because they didn't get out to it? That's going to be a few, a few dozen of people. I don't think eight hundred people will be like a hundred out of them, just like you, did not get to the bill. Those people, they did not pay, and this is, I don't think the city noticed something like this happening before. This is maybe because of this crisis, all this is start happening. I I think if we send them shut off notice, we we really scare those people and we don't need to do that. We, we can tell them about the resources. If it's somebody like you received that, most likely they are not going to use it. And that's what remind them, oh, you need to pay. And if somebody like a low income person receives that and as he was very exciting, there is hell out there, they never knew about it, they will go on and 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 do it. But right now, I think we don't have to speak about shut off. To be honest with you, why in the world we shut off people water, even if there is no COVID? This is like really not supposed to be the value of the city. We, we need to be better than that. I I just think like, right now, please, no shut off at all. You know, you know, just like, let us just put this idea away right now, especially, and think about how can we refer those people so they can pay? There is money out there and people can pay.
So we're about to run into winter, whether we like it or not. And that's, that's not the time to shut off anything.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tim, and that's, that's the, that's the approach that we're contemplating at the staff level. It's, it's again, we're not, we're not going to hold a date over anybody's head because we haven't set a date. But we do feel like we need to start connecting people with resources, making sure that they can get on a payment plan, because with each passing month, that passed due amount just gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And we need to, we need to figure out a way to to bridge that gap. So whenever that date comes, be it six months or six years, that that amount is a manageable amount. So again, we won't, we won't do anything without talking with you all first and making sure you're comfortable with it and just kind of letting you know that, that that planning is going to be important this fall.
Yeah, and one more COVID challenge that we may all face is if the Big Ten decides to resume football play this fall. I think we will likely know that within the next, within the next day or two, if they're going to do something like an an eight game season. But that could have impacts, both good and difficult on the town, and we'll have to think carefully about that.
I was thinking the same thing, Janet. Depends on on whether they do the open stadium and and actually have fans in the stadium or if they just do the football game like, like some schools are doing. So you're, you're exactly right. That's a very big concern.
Yes. All right. Anything else there? All right, we're going to move on to continuing our discussion on Black Lives Matter movement and systemic racism. And I did want to refer to IP four from the, actually, it's from the September tenth information packet. And I don't know if anyone has anything that they wanted to just maybe open up with, but I think it might be helpful if we just kind of look at this and go through it a little bit. Are people okay with that? I should have asked Kelly to post it. Maybe in the future, we'll just have a standing order to have it available, to kind of just throw it up on screen share.
You, do you want me to grab that and?
Actually, I think I, I think I'm sharing my screen.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so.
Mayor, on that first item, you have, the council's first listening post is tomorrow at Mercer Park at five thirty. And I just wanted to make sure that where everybody has the same understanding on on kind of what to expect. And that that includes council staff and the invited guests that that we've, that that we're bringing in to go, to go with the theme. So what I was thinking is that the, the three council members that are hosting these would offer a welcome to the, to the audience and and just generally speak about the, the, the process that you've set forth for this plan to restructure towards community policing. And then again, each night has a, has a theme. And Kelly's been working hard to to get some of the service providers in the community to attend these and and share their perspectives as well. So I I would recommend that council then give the invited service providers an opportunity just to talk a little bit about their field. I I think tomorrow, it's, you know, maybe mental health and addiction crisis. Let them kind of just share their thoughts on on those topics and and share some perspective on how they work with law enforcement now. And perhaps, you know, any ideas that they may have going forward to strengthen those relationships. And then, and then, of course, you know, make, make comment available to anybody from the public that comes as well, whether it's related to the theme or not. I think that's important. There's going to be people that have ideas that maybe aren't tied to that theme that we certainly need to welcome at those, at at those meetings as well. So I'm really asking this because we've gotten a few questions from the nonprofit providers on on what they're going to be asked to do or say at these. And I just want to make sure that we're giving them the right guidance.
Has the community crisis and food bank been invited?
Yeah, Kelly, maybe you could jump on here and and help us with who's, who's confirmed for.
And, and, and I guess the reason I asked that was because Renee has sent something in relationship to kind of the MCOs, the mobile outreach counselors, is what I think is the, kind of the relational thing that was in the information that she sent. And so I just wondered if community would be there, because they actually have that model already deployed, and they've had that model deployed. I want to say definitely twenty, twenty fifteen, but potentially even much earlier than that.
So I did send out for this, this first, it looks like mobile crisis outreach and community. So Becky Reedus is going to be there, and then Prelude, Ron Berg is going to be there for tomorrow's listening post. And then the, do you want to know all of the ones that I have confirmed so far?
At least for me, I just wanted to know if they were, they would be there. I mean, theirs is, I don't want to use the word small scale by any means, but there is a, a model that we can look at that's already in our community. So I thought that would be very beneficial for people to learn about that model and how they do interact with people in the middle of crises. And and they get invited to some calls. And maybe there'll be some conversations about how there's been some avoidance of, you know, police involvement. But nevertheless, I just wanted to know if Becky would be there. So that was my only question, if someone from community will be there. All right, and can you send out to all council the dates again? So we can add them to our calendar, because I did not do that totally.
Yes, sure will.
Any, anything else on this one?
I'd just be interested in hearing, Kelly, if, what the next couple of ones are and if you know what the themes are going to be for them after tomorrow nights.
I'm sure. So for September twenty second, that's the Zoom meeting. And the focus area is special needs populations. And so we've got Mary Roberts from the Village Community, and then Sarah Martinez from Access to Independence of Eastern Iowa that have confirmed that they would be available. And then September twenty sixth is still in limbo as far as focus and service providers. September twenty ninth, focus areas, domestic abuse, child abuse, victim outreach. And Kristy Fortman Dozer from DVIP, Karen Evans from DHS, and Attorney Zimmerman Smith from the county have confirmed. Thanks.
Council, I also maybe would give Ryan a chance to speak. Ryan sent me a note earlier in the week and wondered what the reception might be to doing something that was focused on the, on the, on the student population near campus. So as Kelly mentioned, we've struggled to get the, the, the meeting on the twenty sixth programs. We could look at either rescheduling that for for a good time with with students or adding a, another listening post to focus on students. But Ryan, maybe, maybe you can jump in and kind of talk about why you think that's important.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just had some conversations with other USG members and kind of brought up the, the fact that, you know, students have been leading a lot of these, you know, a lot of protests, a lot of these changes. Certainly been leaders in the community. And I think it would be a really good idea to have a night to address just specifically student concerns for a couple of reasons. One, just the fact that students have been leading in this movement. But also, I think, as we've all seen, there are certainly generational differences in opinions about what we want to see in our community. And so I think in some ways, it actually might help to bring a more fruitful dialogue and discussion if students had a night to themselves to voice their opinions, as well as for the adults that would come in a way to not feel pressured by students, to not speak their mind for fear that there might be disagreements and so on. Because that's certainly one thing is that we might have disagreements because just generationally, as we've seen in this movement. And so I think just between those couple of things, it would be a really good idea to have a night that's just geared purely towards students. And it it might make some students feel a little bit more likely to come and like they're being heard specifically by council.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes, it's a very good idea.
You think the 26th is too soon, Ryan, or could we take that 26th and make it that? And then I guess my question would be, is there a possibility we could do that on the Pinnacle Crest? I don't remember the location for the 26th that we originally had set.
I would have to check with, obviously with scheduling stuff on the Pinnacle Crest. And whether or not the 26th would be too soon. That only really gives us 11 days. So I know, I mean, if it's two weeks out, I can, I almost guarantee that we can get that scheduled. The 26th might be mildly soon.
Why don't you, from your end, I think I'm hearing that that council is supportive of doing something dedicated to the students. And to me, it would make sense if we're going to do that to do it on the Pinnacle Crest unless you have a better idea. But given that we're trying to keep these things outside, we want to do it sooner rather than later before the weather turns on us.
Yeah, I think maybe if I just work with, work with Jeff and Ashley and say staff and to figure out that scheduling and we can get that scheduled, you know, hopefully by the end of this week, if that works.
Yeah, and maybe Kelly can just email all of us and if the 26th would be moved or who wants to be a part of that, but I think we can work that out offline. All right, we're only have about 15 minutes left here. I did want to get to the next item, just to have some comments. Because that is definitely on the website, maybe to give information about where people can see the we gave the video out. And maybe that's the body camera and wait, no, it must be number two in a way. So is there anything else on here that people want to talk about? Before we, I think just for public information, we just gave out the video after the last meeting on that Thursday and it's on the city website.
I just wanted to mention that the CPRB is doing its public forum on next Monday, the 21st at 5:30. You just need to go to the city website and sign up for it and you'll get a link. And I know they would appreciate having a lot of public input.
Just reminder, if there's council members on there, we can't speak. But I've always found it helpful to go and to listen.
We are going to get to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission. That's on our agenda tonight on our formal agenda. And so looking forward to that conversation. Is there, and I am so sorry, because these don't have numbers on them, but the I was referring to the tear gas, rubber bullets, flash bangs and protest. That is the video that is on the city website. So that was something that was directed by council last meeting. And that was put out that Thursday after our last council meeting. That's what I was referring to. I just wanted to clarify. Sorry about that. I know that we're going to have a discussion tonight with truth and reconciliation. And so unless there's someone else that want to talk about any item here. We started the conversation, which is great about the housing, affordable housing plan. And so we'll wait for something there. And then next work session, we'll probably try to dive into this a little more, make sure that we're checking some things off as well or making some plans. Unless there is anything else that anybody wants to address.
Well, just really briefly, Mayor, in case people haven't had a chance to look all the way through, or members of the public haven't had a chance to look all the way through our September 10th info packet that this is part of, there was the report on military grade equipment included in there, which was just recently completed as well as the general order modifying the use of body worn cameras and car recording that had some pretty extensive updates, in my opinion. So thank you to staff for getting those done and including those in our packet.
Thanks, Laura. And I just wanted to sort of second something that I think Counselor Thomas talked about at the last meeting, which is considering as we move forward, whether we might not merge, take advantage of COVID policing and merge it with police reform so that we can really so that we can really roll back some of the minor traffic stops and and stops and really then put a stop to some of the disparate context.
Given that we have just a few minutes left, I don't know, and we kind of have a mishmash of things here in terms of our agenda because we're talking about the Black Lives Matter. We've got the info packet discussion that's later. I don't know if we'll get to, but some of that stuff in the info packets relates to this. So I guess I'm going to bring up. Well, no, I won't. I'm sorry. Oh, wait. This is a crazy, crazy schedule.
Yeah, there's a few overlapping things that comes up later through the info packets. But, all right, if any, does anyone have anything else for now?
I'll just mention quickly that, you know, I have been, and I, at least, I think all of us have been getting quite a bit of correspondence related to the, you know, the IFRs. Do that architectural framework relating to, you know, community wellness and accountability. And I've been trying to use that as a kind of a reference as I think about our response to the policing question. So for example, with with the student engagement, one of the items, policy areas that that architecture refers to is the alcohol and drugs. And, you know, and looking at this, this Iowa City Police Department's statements that I've found in the in the yearly budget report, there's a fairly strong emphasis on enforcing underage drinking. So that's an important piece of our police operation in terms of its day to day activities. So I think to me, and I did contact Ryan earlier or late last week, that that, like traffic law enforcement, I think is a potentially fruitful area to explore at this particular point in time to to see if we want to consider, you know, really take a dive into our policies related to underage drinking and and the drinking question in general. And and have that conversation with students and see what may come out of it. Because as I said, I think at this particular moment in time, like with traffic law enforcement, where things have been disrupted to some extent, I think that's an opportunity to explore other ways of thinking about, you know, how we deploy our resources in that area.
If Brian's still on, I think that would be a good point for that listening post that's geared towards the students. I think if you can emphasize that and and have the students think what their thoughts are on that, I think that's a good idea, John.
Yeah, I would add that that's certainly between traffic stops and probably, I mean, when students think of their interaction with the police in Iowa City, they're probably thinking of downtown and underage drinking. That's probably the greatest or most likely place that they interact with ICPD. So that's certainly an important part that I think would be helpful to talk about the listening post. And students would definitely have opinions about it.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much to everybody joining in on on that discussion. We'll move on to clarification of agenda items unless there's anything else. Don't want to cut anybody off. There are five. I will mention that today there are five proclamations today and didn't know if anyone wanted to kind of volunteer. I know Counselor Taylor volunteered to take over, I think it's the mid, the midwifery week. And if so, you can just contact me once we get off and say, hey, I'll do this one. So I won't spend any more time there. But if you're interested in taking any of those, just let me know. And any other items on the formal agenda for clarification?
Just wanted to let people know, when we do get into the formal meeting in the consent calendar, we've gotten a lot of letters that are essentially form letters that have a lot of questions in them related to policing and Black Lives Matter. And I talked with Jeff this afternoon, and I am going to be asking Jeff to go through those questions and answer those publicly. It has to do with, you know, are the police officers being trained to deescalate, you know, altercations, that sort of thing? Are they forbidden from using chokeholds, et cetera? I think to really try and get some of this information out there with a number of these letters that we're getting that are, they're basically form letters. We've had some that are handwritten. So I am going to be asking him to go through those questions and give those answers to the public when we're in the formal meeting. I'm okay with that, Susan.
Anything else from the formal agenda? Info packet, September 3rd. Info packet, September 10.
I apologize. If I can go back to the third for just a minute. And I hope that people looked carefully at IP three, which is the CPRB's annual report. I think there was a lot of good information in there. Five complaints filed in fiscal year 2020. I think there was a total of 11 allegations within those five complaints, and they were all not sustained, both by the police chief and by the CPRB. And also, if you've been reading any of their minutes, they really are working to get some information from former members, et cetera, on ideas for changes to the CPRB. So that was it. I'm sorry, I was a little slow on the date there.
No, you're fine.
On the 10th, IP six on the body cams, since we've gotten to that. I just want to let all of you know that I did talk with Jeff earlier today about one of the issues in there, and that is, I guess, two issues. How do officers know if their body cam is malfunctioning? And the response was, well, sometimes they know and sometimes they don't. When they turn it on, it's supposed to have a light come on, it's supposed to vibrate. But there can be issues that it could malfunction and they would not be aware of it. So that's, you know, one of those glitches with technology that we all have. And the second one was the issue of if they do know it's malfunctioning and they're out in the field, having to come back to the station downtown to get a new one if they don't have an emergent situation. And my question was, can we make that a decision of the shift commander instead of the officer? So that it doesn't become a judgment call for which they might ultimately be disciplined later on, depending upon how it's looked at. But the answer that Jeff got back from interim chief Brotherton was a concern that the the shift commander is not always immediately available. And they both, I think, felt pretty strongly that if an issue did come up with this, that a that an officer did not come back and get one because there was an emergent situation, that they felt that they could deal with that fairly in terms of any discussions or reporting after the fact. So I just wanted to make sure that we looked at that both from the stamp public, when we have an officer out there with a camera that's not working.
Okay. I had a question on IP 10, the taxi cab regulations. Is the questionnaire leaving the the number of cab, cabs at four rather than dropping them to two as requested by the taxi cab companies? Correct. That was the, I think you had some correspondence a couple of meetings ago from a company that wanted to reduce down to two vehicles. So this is the background on how we got to that minimum vehicle. Stand as I, one, one city that I did a little bit of a search on that and Marion has a policy or an ordinance where it it only requires that there be two vehicles. But one of them has to be in service all the time. So that, I don't know if that's something that we may want to consider as, you know, if we were to drop it to two. You know, having that requirement that one of those two vehicles has to be in operation 20, you know, 24 hours. There has to be constant service from at least one of those vehicles all the time. But that was one option that in my little bit of research seemed like one way of approaching that. And I don't know if that was talked about as part of the two, reducing it to two or not.
What do you mean by that, John? And also for the city manager, what we have right now, what in the list right now for operation wise?
Well, we're, as I understand it, we require the taxi cab companies to have a minimum of four vehicles. And there's been a request by the cab companies to drop it to two vehicles. And what I found with Marion, Iowa, outside Cedar Rapids, was they have a two, two vehicle requirement, you know, minimum. And one of those vehicles has to be in service all the time.
I'm talking about what we have currently on the, like, if they have four vehicles or if they have one. Was the requirement for like, when they have to be available?
That I don't know.
You're asking currently, Maz?
Uh huh, yes, currently.
Currently, they have to have a minimum of four vehicles when they they renew their company license.
But it doesn't matter. They have, one of them have to be operated all the time.
Let me look through this because I, Ashley's kind of my point person on this, but.
I believe they have to, they have to have a 24 hour, 24 seven.
Answering call.
Just call answering, right?
Well, no, we had, we had those in there and those were dropped. So we had like the the office requirement in Iowa City or Corvill and then a 24 seven operation, but those were were dropped from the requirements.
This is Eleanor. I don't recall a requirement that they be operating always other than that.
I think, you know, John Thomas, I don't know if you knew that the people who have like taxi companies in this area is, we have like main big companies, yes. But most of the other is really low income people who are doing this. And this kind of requirement, it would be like obfiscical. I guess we need to leave it as it is, as it was, with minimum of two vehicles.
Well, it's four vehicles.
But right now, they didn't use it to two, right?
No, no, it's four.
Are you, yeah, it's four, but where the two come from? I did not follow that.
That was requested by the taxi companies, correct?
Yeah, but are we doing it?
It was requested by one specific task, I think.
Yeah, I guess that means they don't have enough business. That's why they requested to down to two. And I mean, like, even if we guaranteed that to two, we don't have And I mean, like, even if we guaranteed that to two, we don't have to require them to operate it 24 hours. Because I guess what was everything going on right now, maybe it's no business.
Yeah. Oh, I wasn't necessarily advocating for that. I was just, it was another variable. You know, with, with the idea being that it seemed one of, one of the issues associated with this question is the legitimacy and viability of the service. And that, you know, the fewer the cars that are part of the fleet, the less viable the service may be. Well, you know, what, in reading Marion's, it seemed like one, one way of trying to address maintaining service with fewer vehicles is ensuring that at least one of them is in service at all, at all times. It's not an area I have a lot of.
Is this a conversation we can pick back up? It's 10 minutes till seven. All right, so we are resuming our work session. And I know that Counselor Thomas had and Counselor Mayor Proton were in conversation just as we had to end. So.
Mayor, can I hop in with just a little bit of information if we're talking about the taxis?
Yes.
So we, we had the request from the cab company to go from four down to two for the, the maximum requirement or minimum requirement. And council had asked for some history. So that's your IP10 in the September 10th info packet. From a staff perspective, I think with the, when we, the changes that have evolved with the business renewal change to being once a year. And then with the TNCs, the, the number of pop up companies during the football season has dropped dramatically. We don't seem to have that issue anymore. And I did survey some other, other cities. About half of them responded back. But Clinton, Cedar Rapids, Waterloo, Dubuque, they have no minimum. Corville is for, for taxi cabs and for drivers. I was hoping to hear back from Ames, but I, I didn't. That would have been a good comparable with us. And then currently just the two companies, Big Ten has two vehicles. Since they're able to do that with the mayor's order and the suspension of the requirement of four cabs. And Yellow Cab has 17 vehicles. And hopefully that will help with your discussion.
Thanks, Kelly.
So Kelly, you're saying that with the changes to the once a year licensing in May, in particular, that you're not, we're not really seeing any of these kind of pop up kinds of companies come football season. Is that right?
Not like we were. And I think some of it has to do with like Uber and Lyft also. I think the combination of the two.
Given that situation, I'm willing to entertain the idea of going to a minimum of two. I just wanted to make sure on that because let me tell you, when you go back and look at that history, I can tell you over the last 10 and a half years, I don't know how many council meetings I've sat in that we've talked taxis. And I mean, it's just really been kind of crazy. But I think with the, the TNCs, which are basically the Uber and Lyft, that really has changed the landscape a lot. And obviously we're in unprecedented waters right now with the pandemic and with the cancellation of football season or at least delay, whatever. So I'm willing to, to go to the two, which I'm assuming would require staff to bring back an ordinance to us.
I also would be in favor of going to the two rather than the four because, as you'd said, Susan, the Lyft and Uber did change the landscape of our taxi cab business in our town significantly. We're down to just the two, as she said, the Big Ten and yellow. And that's a shame, I think, because there were some independent, we talk about independent and businesses, small businesses, and that's what these were for these folks was business. So I think we should, we should encourage them and I think bringing it down to two might help.
I would agree with the two as well. I think, Mayor, I forgot who had proposed the, they looked at another community, maybe it was Marion where it was 24 seven. And I would be like Mayor, and I'm with Mayor Proton that we shouldn't do those requirements. So definitely I support the two with no, just changing that only.
Yeah, I think the two seems, all things considered, a reasonable change.
All right. So it seemed like we have majority there. Any other comments? Hearing none. All right. Is there, um, we, are there any items from the info packet that anyone wanted to mention? And then after that, I think we'll probably entertain an adjournment from work session.
I quickly would mention IP11 on the 10th, the memo from the Climate Action Coordinator, you know, the, the numbers are, we're tracking well, but it's really primarily because of the actions of Mid-American and the university. And so, you know, issues related to reducing carbon emissions other, other than for those two factors, you know, we're, we're losing ground. So it's just something to keep in mind. Don't really have any, any thoughts beyond that, other than perhaps with the fires in the West, that the emphasis on adaptation. You know, if you look at actions, whether they're mitigation or adaptation, I personally feel that we need to be as concerned with adaptation as we do with mitigation. And, you know, how that would translate to conditions here. Because climate change is not some future event. It's happening right now. And so we need, I think, to acknowledge the fact that, you know, we may not be able to meet our goals, at least in as timely fashion as we would like. So we need to be thinking adaptation as well as mitigation.
Any other IP item? Hearing none. Are we good to adjourn for the evening?
We are, but I'd just like to make one comment that I meant to make at the end of the, the formal meeting, which is, you know, as we've seen and heard about, people are hurting. There are people who have experienced trauma. There are people who are having enormous difficulties. Some of them we know, some of them we don't. I just ask that everybody give people space and grace. Thank you.
And Mayor, I'd just like to go back to, John mentioned the fires and I would like to say that I know many, many in the community have friends and relatives that live on the West Coast. And, and our thoughts are certainly with that it's the entire West Coast. It's just literally burning. And then there are others in the country that are facing hurricanes. So my thoughts are certainly with all the members of these communities that are facing these.
All right. Anything else? Hearing nothing, then we're adjourned for the night. Thank you, counselors, and thanks to the public and for being with us tonight and of course to our staff for being with us as well. And have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mayor.